Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board meeting September ninth, two thousand and twenty. I'd ask you to stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first on the agenda is to approve the minutes from August twelfth. I don't know, has the board had time to go through them? I have.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I have.
Anybody have a correction or anything?
I do not.
No, I haven't. I do not.
I don't either.
Okay, I'll take the motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. This is Marco.
Second.
Who seconded?
Ed seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For all, thank you. All right, the first order of business tonight is open a public hearing for Mr. Calabro. Before I go any further, I got a return receipt letter for, from him. So I'm definitely within two hundred and fifty feet. So if anybody would like me to recuse myself, I have no problem, the attorney or Mr. Calabro. I have no problem with doing that, but I wanted to put that out front for everybody.
For the record, not necessary.
What is that?
I think this gave you a lie too close.
Who said that?
One two, just see.
Garcia.
Who said for the record?
I was calling Calabro to twenty-six Travis Avenue. I'm gonna shut mine off.
All right, did everybody hear what I said for the record? I'll recuse myself. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Uh, no.
I don't have a problem.
No problem.
I don't have a problem.
No problem.
Marco? No problem. I'm here.
And how about, uh, Mr. Calabro's attorney? Mr. Garcia?
Right here, I know, not necessary. I thank you for the op, for the offer, but not necessary.
Okay, thank you very much.
So you can stay there?
Then I can stay and I will proceed with, uh,
Okay.
Catalog number one, uh, number one dash twenty BZ. It's a public hearing for an interpretation of the zoning law or zoning map for property at two twenty-five Travis Avenue.
That, that's two twenty-six.
Two twenty-six.
Darn if you're not right, two twenty-six, sorry. I cleaned these glasses before I started. All right, so, um, I want you to know that we, we set a public hearing for tonight, obviously. Uh, Mr. Mr. Calabro gave me the, uh, return receipt, uh, letters. And he sent out thirty-three and he got twenty-one back signed.
Thirty-three, twenty-one, any non-deliverable?
I didn't see anything that said non-deliverable.
Okay, no. Okay, great.
Okay. I'll touch base with you, Rosemary, and, and get them to you, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so I, I think, uh, we just had site inspection.
Motion.
I'll make the motion open the public hearing.
I second it, Mary Fonson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Rosemary.
All right, wait a second, I have to tell this person. Bobby, I have to talk to you now, I'm conducting, I'm on a meeting. All right, bye.
Okay, um, we just made a site inspection over there at six fifteen. All four of the board members were there, as was the owner and his attorney. And he gave us some descriptive, uh, layout of what he wants to do and, uh, a rendering, drawing to see what it would look like in the future if the variance or the interpretation is granted. So I, I'm just gonna start first and then I can go around the room with you guys. I, um, I think it looks great where it is, but I'm adhering to the code book. And what I would like to do is have a meeting with the village board. So they can tell me that they have no problem if I go ahead and ask for somebody to grant a variance. That's what I personally would like to do. But Mary, I'll give you a shot.
Um, well, I also am okay with it as it stands, but if you want to go to the board with it, I'm okay with that as well.
This is Marco, yeah. Um, a- after reviewing the property and seeing how the road is laid out right away and what have you, I, I think it behooves us to go to the board and get their approvals to go forward with this project, or at least get their opinion as to what they believe we can or cannot do.
Ed?
Okay, I, uh, I've also looked at this, uh, we spent some time, uh, I, I don't have a problem with going to the board and asking what their views are. I don't know that they will respond, but we'll, we can, uh, there's never hurts to ask.
I got you.
So I'm for it.
Okay, thank you. The reason why I asked this is because I, I don't have a problem with this project. It looks like it'll fit right in the neighborhood. But, you know, they're asking, basically asking us to break the law and I, I feel a little squirmish about that, being the chairman of the zoning board, so I would like to have a meeting with them, explain to them my, my position, and if they say, uh, okay, let, let's ride, and I have no problem with that. And I did talk to-
I'm sorry, guy, I apologize. Continue, I'll finish, finish this a lot.
Hello?
Hello? I did talk to Mr. Garcia at the site. About this.
All right, wait a minute. Gary, wait. Someone has a que-
Someone has a question.
Rosemary, Rosemary, questions will be brought up after the applicant has the opportunity to respond to anything they want to respond to after the board and the applicant finished their discussion. Then we can open it for public discussion, so you can have the person on hold, or they can wait until they're ready.
Uh, after, uh, the applicant talks uh, and his attorney, then you can speak, unless you have just a quick question.
Uh, uh, Rosemary, we'll put you on mute, so you can have that discussion, so they can board and the applicant can just keep on discussing the application, okay? Go ahead, Chairman.
Okay, the only problem with her on mute, she's not gonna be able to get the minutes down. Unless you're taping the minutes and she can get them off of you.
The whole meeting's being taped, and I'm gonna send her the copy of the video after we're done.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, as I started to say, I talked to Mr. Garcia at the site inspection. And I let him know my feeling on this from the get-go, so I'm sure they're not surprised that I'm asking to do this, but you know, I, I, like I said, I, I have no problem with the, with the project, but I just want everybody to realize, you know, the code doesn't say you can do this. So I, I would like to get their interpretation of what they think too, so other than that, I have nothing else.
And I think that's fine, if I may, I mean, I'm Mr. Calabro's, I mean, after speaking with Gary, I, I certainly understand, and again, yes, while the code does have set forth certain parameters that are required. Given, given the circumstances that the Calabro House shows, as, as we've seen at, at two twenty, two twenty-six Travis, that, um, you know, the, the room is there, I, I think that the zone, the, the, um, the code contemplates, or should contemplate, uh, given that the spaces, the, the, the space requirement is there, that the interpretation i- is appropriate, is adequate. And, uh, you know, th- there is no adverse effect to the, to the community and to the neighborhood for that matter, so. Uh, but i- if Gary, if you're comfortable going to the, if that's what you want to do, then fine, we'll, we're more than happy to go along with the board and oh, you know, we can, we can speak with the, with, with the, with the remaining board members as well and, and, and speak to them as well. And, you know, we, we, if, if they're interested in hearing from us.
Okay, thank you for your patience.
Not a problem.
Any of the board, board members have anything else?
No.
Nothing at this time.
No.
Okay, are we gonna let Rosemary in now?
I've been talking. Um, what? What would be the variance for the interpretation, or can the board act on the interpretation?
I'm sorry, Rosemary, is that a question from a resident? We need to name and address, or is that what your, your question is?
That's my question.
Okay.
Looking at Stephanie's, uh, uh, memo. I just want the, uh, did everyone look at the memo?
Yes.
Yes.
I did, yep.
Okay. And you're acting in accordance with her memo?
Basically, we're gonna go to the village board and try to have a joint meeting with them, so we can ask them, uh, some questions. I don't know how that would work, because that's beyond to the public. But that, that's basically it. We're just gonna hold it over for one month, we'll keep the public hearing open. And we can, you know, anybody can make comment next month, too. And then we'll, uh, from there, we'll close the meeting and take a vote.
Okay.
Is there anybody on the phone that has a question? Rosemary?
Well, David Gomes, but, uh, he hung up.
Did he, did he ask, did he ask you the question that you can repeat?
No, he didn't, uh, he hung up before. I, I guess, I don't know if I can call him back.
Do you, do you, um, does anybody know Mr. Gomes?
No.
I don't know him either.
No.
Because I would say I'd reach, reach out to him and see what his comments is, but.
Well, he called twice.
Do you have his number, so you can try calling him back?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, we're, we're live right now, so if he wants to call back, or anyone wants to call, they can call now.
He lives on two thirty-three Travis Avenue.
Yes, I, I believe that Mr. Gomes is the resident, uh, catty corner across the street from Mr. Calabro. He's not an ass.
He texted me, he's not an ass, he just wants to watch.
Okay, my understanding for Mr. Calabro is that he just got a text from Mr. Gomes that he, he did that, doesn't have a question per se, but he was trying to watch, so I think that there may have been some misunderstanding there.
Okay, thank you for the, thank you for that clarification.
Oh, wait, maybe they're calling now.
Oh, phone call, phone call coming in.
Calling now. Hello? Mr. Gomes? To, to the village board? Okay, hold on. Why do they have to go back to the village board? That's Mr. Gomes's question.
Because if we go and face what it is right now, we probably have to reject this application. So we're get, we're giving them another chance, another way to get around this.
Do you hear that? Prolonging, well, because I believe that if they, uh, answered now, they would have to reject the application. Am I correct?
Yes, you're correct, and then a lot of things come into play then. We have to wait a year for another submission and so forth, so we don't want to do that to this homeowner.
Okay, can you hear what he says?
I don't, I know, I can't hear anything.
Rosemary, is he watching the meeting? There's a little, if you're watching on Facebook, there's a little delay if he's watching the meeting. Alive.
They're going to have a joint meeting with the, uh, village board to see what they say about this interpretation. Okay? You're welcome. Mr. Gomes said, "Thank you very much."
Okay. Anybody else?
Somebody's wounded. Mr. Garcia, if that's a baby crying, can you just mute until we, it might be coming from you?
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chairman.
Okay, um, if there's no other questions this, this time, I would entertain a motion to hold it over till a September meeting, which, which would be, I mean, October meeting, sorry. Which would be October, what is it?
October fourteenth, it looks like to me.
Yep, yep, October fourteenth.
Thanks.
Somebody give him a motion, please?
I would so move to, uh, keep the public me, uh, public meeting open uh, for another month to October the fourth, eighteen, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, second, please?
Second that.
Okay.
Who is that?
Marco, Marco, second it.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, before we leave this totally, Marcus, can you see if the village board with Stephanie could either do a Zoom with me, so we could have a meeting about this? I know we probably can't do it all together, because you're gonna have to make it a public meeting with everybody involved.
Sure, let me, sure, Chairman, let me talk to Stephanie, in the next village, uh, the next meeting is a workshop meeting, which is March, which, I mean, September twenty-second, which is the regular meeting at the village board, so that's already been noticed, so I can ask, ask, and ask the board if they, they wanted to have a joint meeting to have this discussion at that meeting, or they want to have a separate meeting, I'll get back to you, and then you can get back to the rest of your board.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Of course.
Okay.
Oh, this is Rosemary. The, uh, the green cards that you, you have.
Like I told you, Rosemary, I have all the stuff.
Okay.
I'll give it to you tomorrow, hon.
Well, you don't have to, you can bring it to the, uh, village hall.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So, uh, Mr. Garcia, uh, any other statements before they go to the next item?
Nothing further. Thank the board for its consideration.
Thank you for being patient with it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the, uh, catalog number two dash twenty BZ. It's an application for a variance from requirement of section two eleven nineteen dash one A and two eleven dash twenty-one dash C, as well as an accessory structure and fence for property lo- located at two fifteen Catherine Street. Excuse me, excuse me if I pronounce your name wrong, Kevin Asman?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't think they, uh, I emailed them, I never got a response, so I was hoping they would join the meeting, I have not seen them, they have not contacted me. Rosemary, have they contacted you in any way?
No. No, not at all.
Okay, I guess we'll leave it carried over till the next meeting.
Perfect.
So we're gonna shoot to the last one, sorry?
I just wanted to make mention, uh, uh, Marcus, uh, you know, this second month they didn't come, are they gonna abandon this, or what? I mean, we, I don't think we should keep carrying things over. If they don't want to come, then they don't want to come, let them, you know, do what they feel they need to do, but we're not gonna hear them. I mean, that's just my opinion, I'm sorry, but that's my opinion.
Yep, I agree, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna send them an email and then follow with a phone call, and, and before the next meeting, I g- and I'll get the board a response, and see what they tell me.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay, and the other thing on the agenda is a variance from, I'm sorry, catalog number three dash twenty dash BZ. It's a variance from the requirement of section two eleven seventeen, side yard variance two feet for property located at two oh eight Tate Avenue. Michael Scalante.
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody, everybody received a copy of the, um, some architectural drawings and, uh, of the staircase and the small deck they wanted built. So, uh, Michael, if you don't mind calling you, Michael.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you don't explain, if, or mind explaining to the board what you're trying to accomplish, so that way they can, um, you know, ask you any questions from your presentation.
Um, basically, we're just trying to create an access from our kitchen to our backyard. Um, probably in January, our old neighbor had passed away, which we used to use their steps in between the houses to get into the backyard with our dogs and such. Um, but being that they sold the house and there's new neighbors there, we now have a fence in between. And we're really just trying to make the backyard accessible from the first floor of the house. As there's no other way to get back there other than a basement exit.
Okay. Well, last month, I, uh, went to village hall and I met with Anthony outside to look at a proposed plan for stairs. You recall that, Anthony?
Anthony, we can't hear you, Anthony.
All right, well, let me, uh, let me just say, he came outside and we reviewed a plan on the hood of one of the police cars. And I was told I was gonna get it in my box, but I never saw the actual plan after that. Does everybody have a copy of that besides me?
I have a copy that was, uh, sent to us via email.
I do have a copy, I got the, I got it from the, uh, from, from the office today.
I, I, I can share, i- if you would like, I can share my screen and put it up on the screen if you want, Chairman.
Absolutely, be great.
All right. Just give me one minute.
How the heck did I not get that?
You didn't? You could have my copy.
Anthony, you remember when you, uh, showed me the copy out in the parking lot? Guess not.
I don't think Anthony's on.
I don't think.
No, Anthony's on, Anthony's on, but he, uh, the problem is, we can't hear him. So I don't know what's going on there. But he's, he's trying to do something, I guess, see, I'm gonna share my screen now.
Okay.
Okay, so uh, Michael, if you want to, I can, uh, this is, you might, I wanna, wanna explain maybe what, what I'm showing to the, to the board, so in case there's any questions, I'll go from page to page.
Basically, that's pretty much the only spot we can cut a door in to, I guess, if you're looking at that, to the left of that is our kitchen, and then after that is the mudroom, which has our laundry in it. Um, so we're kind of limited to that one section to be able to cut any um, door in to get an exit out to the backyard.
Is the dotted lines where you want to cut the door in, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so.
Can you go, this is Marco speaking, can you go down to the next, uh, just keep going, a little bit more, please? Okay, so.
So he's, so, so you're coming off the back here, so it's just, it's just a little platform in the staircase, Michael?
Yeah, it's, uh, I believe a five by three, or five, five feet wide by four feet out exit with a sliding door. So the door will slide to the left, so you'll go out onto the platform and then make a left and then go down the stairs to the backyard.
Okay, so that's kind of where my question comes, I see that L shape right there, the, uh, in the diagram. And the stairs are, are to the left of the L. If the stairs are to the right of the L, you know, the L was pointing to the left, would that give you the, would that work for you right there?
Um, it could be built like that, but what I'm trying to do is not lose my patio. Um, you know, we have patio table and stuff out there. So if we go the other way, that's gonna end up right dead smack in the middle of my patio. Which is really cutting down our, our patio room.
And Michael, uh, what's on this section of the house over here?
That's a step down, I have a, um, in the house, that's my laundry room. And then outside, that's a, a step down to another little slab where we have access to a storage room underneath the laundry room. Which is only accessible from outside.
Okay.
How much of a variance are you looking for? Looks to me like, like, you know, two feet or something, three feet.
Right.
Yeah, at the bottom of the step from the property line, it'll be two feet off the property line to that last step at the bottom there.
Right around here, right?
Yes. At the top, I believe it's five feet where the platform is to the property line.
Okay.
That's on the top section there.
I don't really know if there's anything in the code about, about this, other than side yards usually, if, if it was a house, it had to be ten feet. But it's not a house, it's just a stairwell, so I don't know if that meets that requirement. But, I mean, I it looks like a good plan to me, but I'm not, uh.
Well, we could, with Chairman, what we could do, if this is something that the board would like to entertain, um, you could call for the public hearing the next, at the next meeting, uh, Stephanie will be back. Uh, and then we can have a discussion legally, and also we have access, hopefully we'll have, um, Anthony back. And then we can hold a public hearing, and then, and the neighbors can also, you know, raise any comments they would like to raise as well.
Yeah, I know Anthony came out one day and he surveyed the property, just kind of see, like, the layout and everything. Um, but other than that, that's, that's pretty much where we're at.
And, and then Chairman also gives you opportunity to another site visit before the public hearing too, and everybody can take a look at the property.
Yep. I have no problem with that. Is, uh, the board members?
I don't have a, this is Marco Pinkley, I don't have a problem with that. I'd like to go out and take a look at this.
Okay. Ed?
Yes, I feel the same way, Gary, I think I'd just like to go out and eyeball it, see where we're at with it. Perhaps you, in fact, uh, uh, the question you did raise, good question. Maybe, uh, Stephanie could take a look at it and, uh, maybe respond to it to the board before the next meeting, I don't know if she will be able to, but it's, uh, something to, I guess, think about.
Yep. Mary?
Um, I, I'd like to see it. Um, I don't, I was under the impression that it was a minimum of three feet on, on a, a property, on a side lot on the, on the property line, so I'd like to see exactly what it looks like.
I think it, it is three foot, but an auxiliary structure. But this isn't really an auxiliary structure, that's like a shed or something, you know?
Okay.
Um, well, if, if, if everybody's in agreement with that, we could set up a, uh, a look at it, uh, for next month, it, like we did today, six fifteen.
Yes.
That's okay.
The fourteenth?
Yes.
Somebody make a motion for that?
I'm making a motion to, uh, have the site visit at six sixteen.
And open.
Uh, I'll second it.
Okay, and we're gonna add, and open the public hearing? My best.
No, no, no. This is not a public hearing.
No, you're, you're gonna call for the public hearing at the next meeting, if you wish.
Okay, yeah, all right, I'm in favor of doing that, too.
Wait a second, are you going to set a public hearing tonight?
Uh,
It's up, it's up to you guys.
I mean, I don't know, you guys want, you want to set a public, or you want to get a look first and then set the public hearing?
You can always adjourn and continue.
Yeah.
Uh, I would suggest going, uh, with the public hearing, and as indicated, like we're doing with the first one, matter, we- I would suggest going, uh, with the public hearing and as indicated, like we're doing with the first one, matter, we can always, uh, put it over for another month if we think it's necessary.
Everybody good with that?
I agree.
Uh, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
All right, so Ed's making the motion for the public hearing.
I will.
Six fifteen?
Yes.
And Mary's gonna second it, right?
No, that's, the site visit is six fifteen.
Site visit, thanks.
You don't need a motion for the site visit.
No.
Okay.
But we, I, I'll, I'll make the motion for the public hearing on, uh, ten, on ten...
Fourteen.
It's ten fourteen.
Yes, sir.
And I'll second it. Mary?
Okay, Mary, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got that set. Mike, we got that set, so we're gonna be at your house the fourteenth and take a look at it, okay?
Okay, is that the, so I guess my question is what's the, the site visit and then after that, what's the next step? Is that after the next meeting or is that the day of the next meeting?
No, then we'd have to open a public hearing and you have to send out the cards like Mr. Calabro did. And so you, all your neighbors know that are within two hundred and fifty feet.
So I'm looking at, whoa, what, another two months before I can actually move forward with it?
I'm, I'm probably gonna have to say yes to that.
Okay.
I wish I could tell you something different, but...
Well, I'm just asking because I've been Anthony, not to throw him under the bus, I'm not doing that. But he said that this wouldn't be really a big deal and, but we gotta do what we gotta do, so it's, it's, it's where we're at.
Okay, thank you for being understanding.
So Mike, just to make sure you understand the process, uh, you contact village hall tomorrow, um, to get, um, a list of addresses within two hundred feet to notify everybody for the public hearing. And then also from the building department, you're gonna sign, you gotta get a sign to put in front of your property to notify the public that there'll be a meeting at your house at six fifteen. And it's, it's open to the public as well, all your neighbors can come over, uh, and just see what's going on.
Okay.
All right, so you'll call village hall tomorrow, Anthony tomorrow, and they'll go through the process for you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, uh, Stephanie will prepare the legal notice and email it to Michael.
Yes, tha- and that's what you send to your neighbors.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else?
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Do you have your mask on?
Yes.
I'm gonna speak for myself here before we close the meeting. I really hope that these, uh, Zoom meetings come to an end because to me, it's just a lot nicer when we can look at everything and talk about it when we're, you know, when we're at village hall, but I get it, I get it, the process and, you know, we'll have to deal with it as can. We, we did a little better this time than last month, I think, you know, progress.
It's a, the more practice the better. Just to make sure everybody understands, until the governor's order is, uh, expired, even after that, if we do wanna meet at village hall, we have to take everybody's temperature, not only the board, but anybody else that comes in. We have, I have to sterilize all the bathrooms before and also we gotta tr- uh, contact tracing notifications. So everybody has to give me their email addresses, address, phone number, all that stuff too. So there are steps. If we do wanna open up for the next meeting, if the governor's order has not been released, but there are steps we have to follow. So to make sure that you and the public know that as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
What is this for the, uh, oh, I'm, I, I don't know if I got frozen out or whatever. I just came back again. I'm sorry, did I miss something? I apologize.
Yeah, we all got a raise.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm part of it, you know, I'm part of it. They wanna do that, that's, that's great. The only thing I wanna bring up... The only thing I, oh, is this for meeting, uh, for the meeting, just the meeting? I, I just wanted to bring up, I know we didn't go live, not for nothing. This technology, it's good, as I always like to say, it's good until it's not. Um, I'd rather go in live and I, you know, I guess we have to see next month, Marcus?
Yeah.
That's what you missed. He was explaining that.
That's a part, yeah, that's a part. The, uh, governor's order, um, goes to Octo-, uh, beginning of October next month. But again, this isn't an option, so if the board does wanna meet live, um, what we're gonna have to do is I'm gonna make sure I gotta have somebody to take everybody's temperature. Uh, we also have to get everybody's contact information for contract tracing and I gotta make sure all the doors and, and the place is sterilized or, you know, disinfected. So if the board does wanna do that next month, even with the governor's order, we can, we can meet. I think we, I thought, uh, it looks like Ed froze again.
Hey, your heat bill over there, Ed?
Uh, so the, there's something going on with his internet access. So definitely, uh, Gary, if you do wanna meet next month live with the governor's order or not, just let me know and we can make everything set up, okay?
Well, I'll do, I'm gonna talk to the mayor because if she'd like me to poll the board, we'll do it again.
Poll the board now.
Poll the board now, so you have everybody here.
I mean, uh, I mean, I guess we could do that. Do you have any problem with meeting live next month as long as he can?
No, I, no, I don't, as again, I wound up getting frozen out.
Yes.
Zoom wants, is more concerned whether or not I'm a robot. And, uh, I, you know, I just, I would prefer to meet live if we really can. Um, I know we've done it a couple of months, but there's... You know, we'll see, we'll see what happens.
You know, this is Marco. I'm flexible either way. I can meet live or we could do via Zoom. I'll, I'll go along with the majority on this one.
And I'm okay with either.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I'm more, I'm more pro, I'd like to meet.
Okay, that's fine.
That's just my vote though. I'm only one of four here, so.
Right, so it looks like everyone wants to do that, that's fine. I'll make sure we talk to the custodian of the building, get everything, everything cleaned up, disinfected. Make sure we, we got thermometer. Well, I'll, I'll do what I have to get done to make, make it easy for you guys to, to meet. So we can actually meet, uh, at village hall next month. That's not a problem. And Rosemary, just make that notification for the next agenda, okay? That we'll be meeting in village hall.
Okay, uh, what about the applicants?
Yeah, if you don't mind notifying, notifying them as well.
Email them, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so what's up for next month at village hall?
Okay, great.
Okey dokey.
Uh, did a motion, I, I don't have a motion to close the, the, uh, meeting.
We're getting there.
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing, or close the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ed seconded.
All right, good night, everybody. Now.
Thanks, Marcus.
All right, thank you guys. Have a good night. Bye bye.